Welcome to our town council meeting today, Monday, June 22. We are happy that you are joining us and that we have much business to do tonight. So, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Sorry, everybody's got to make sure that you're, the council people, that one's on mute when you're not talking.
Okay.
If you would call the roll, please.
Christopher Columbus.
Here.
Paul Chaplinsky. Michael Del Santo.
Present.
Valerie DePaolo.
Here.
William Dietzick.
Here.
I'm Lombardi.
Here.
James Morelli.
We expect Jim coming in, he is probably just a few minutes late, so.
Christopher Palmieri.
Here.
Victoria Triano.
Here. Before we begin anything further, I just, for those that are joining us by computer or, but by computer, we will be having a chat function that is normally available when you're doing a regular kind of meeting. This, we want to keep it so that what is said is accurate and that it's clear and that we, we don't want to entertain any chat underneath the meeting. So all chat functions are shut off during this meeting and we look forward to hearing from all of you later, but right now, if you could lead us in the prayer, Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a point, Councilman Morelli just joined the meeting, so.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Good, welcome, Jim.
Okay. Bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, we ask that you would keep your hand upon us as we commit ourselves to the citizens of Southington. We pray for wisdom and clarity in the decision-making and we humbly ask for continued blessing upon Southington. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Would you stand for the flag salute, please, everyone? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. May I have a motion on the minutes, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you, Chris.
Paul, second.
Paul, second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. Counselor person's communication, I, I believe Chief Daley is with us, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's good. What I would like to do, we have a few folks giving some information and Chief, there you are, hi Chief, could you give the town and the council specifically an update on our training for our police officers?
Any discussion on training has to start with the hiring process. As many of you maybe know, in Connecticut, to be hired as a police officer, you must pass a written test, physical agility test, a psychological exam, a polygraph exam, and then be subject to a very thorough background investigation. Once hired by the Board of Police Commissioners, that's the format in Southington, they do the hiring, once hired, you're scheduled for an academy class over at the Post Academy in Merritt. That is 23 weeks of police academy training. When you complete that, you then start a 12-week field training program here at the Southington Police Department, where you ride and learn the ways of Southington. After 35 weeks, you're ready to become a certified officer in the state of Connecticut. In addition to the hiring process and the hiring of new officers, every three years, it's called the recertification, our officers have to go through a three-year recertification cycle. That requires you to attend 60 hours of continuing training. Our average in, at SBD, on the three-year cycle, we actually do approximately 82 hours of training, we do a little more than is required. Of that 60 hours of the required, there's 28 hours of mandated classes that include domestic violence, sexual violence, human trafficking, crimes motivated by bigotry and bias, mental health awareness, juvenile law, fair and impartial policing. And then there's 32 hours that the department can choose as electives. Few things about the police academy, police officers and standards and training academy in Merritt that we go to is only one of 48 of approximately 850 police academies that are currently Kalia, which is a commission on accreditation for law enforcement agencies. It's Kalia certified, so in 2018, the Connecticut State Legislature put together a task force to study police training in this state and some of the results stated that Connecticut has already looked at nationally as a leader in police education, so Connecticut's ahead of the curve. Some Southington-specific training, we do CIT, which is Crisis Intervention Team Training. We started that program in January of 2017. It's a 40-hour course described as a best practice model by Police Executive Research Forum, also known as PERF, for safety of the community, the law enforcement officer, and the lives of people in crisis. Officers use verbal de-escalation techniques to better handle their complaints. Currently, we have 27 employees in the Southington Police Department who are trained in CIT. Another program that we're known for is our HOPE, which stands for Heroin Opioid Prevention and Education. That's a partnership with HCC to offer a treatment path for those with heroin opioid addiction without arrest, to provide them with services for individuals wanting help. Another program we do in Southington is Dementia Friends First Responder Training. It raises awareness to our personnel for the recognition of people living with dementia, gives officers techniques for better communicating with these people, and how the officers can direct their loved ones to obtain services to assist them. Another program we have is, it's called STARS, Start Talking About Rough Stuff. It was started in 2017 due to the fact that our department recognized that personnel in the course of their assigned duties may encounter incidents that resulted varying degrees of psychological and emotional trauma that if left unattended, could lead to problems for our employees, which may affect their ability to be a part of a productive team. In the future, we're, we are in the planning process for both de-escalation and additional diversity training to come in this 2020 season. That's, that's all I had for training summary. If anyone had questions, I'd gladly answer.
Are there any questions from the council? I think it's so important for us to stay on top of this with our police department. Anybody have any questions? Remember, we don't have a chat function, so you need to raise your hand, we need to see you, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes, all right, first Chris, I think that's Chris Palmieri, is that correct?
It is, and I don't know why my camera isn't working, it's saying it's on, but I don't think it's working, so I apologize.
That's okay, Chris, go ahead.
It's more of a comment, I just want to thank Chief Daley. At the last meeting, I shared with all of you, I had spoken to Deputy Chief Palmieri as well, and he shared a lot of what you shared with us tonight, Chief, and I want to thank you for being proactive because a lot of these were practices that were longstanding in place, especially related to the accreditation, so thank you for all your efforts and please thank your department.
Thank you. I know Val DePaolo has her hand up, Val?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Chief Daley, thank you so much for, for being here and giving us an update on the training. So, since, since some of these incidents have taken place, I've been reading a little bit about, you know, the police brutality across the nation, and maybe this is something we can talk about offline, but a lot of the articles are talking about training isn't the only thing that needs to take place, you know, they talk about establishing community and police relationships, you know, in the community, so relationship building, having a system of accountability and oversight, you know, for the, the police officers. I'm wondering, you know, what are, what are your thoughts on that?
I, I'll gladly answer that one. I think that Southington is ahead of the curve in a lot of these areas. If you look at our charter, when the town was established, we have a civilian police commission, which is realistically a civilian review board. They set the policies, they do hiring, firing, promotions, they're responsible for the oversight of us at the police department, so as far as, that's one of the things that is being asked for, is civilian review. We have it already in Southington. Another thing that is being requested is accreditation. Now, post, the post council, which I sit on the post council, has required something called the CLASP, which is 16 standards in policing that each department has to have. It's called Compliance to Law Enforcement Standards. That's the lowest level of certification. We're actually at the next step up. We've, we've already received tier one accreditation and we're currently working on tier two accreditation. We're currently being re-accredited from, and we did that in 2016. So there's a lot of the things that we have done in, prior to any of this new stuff that's going on, we've done it and we, we constantly look for ways to improve, so.
Great, thank you so much.
As far as being involved in the community, I think that's our trademark, we're very much involved in the community in this town. We're just like a big team and we're a part of it.
That's right. Paul, you have your hand up?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I wanted to just touch on the community aspect, I think, and first of all, thank you, Chief, for coming and, and, you know, giving us a lot of the details on the training and being proactive as well. You know, I often see members of the police department also on a lot of the community committees and actively involved in things such as the steps, steps programs, they're in our schools. I've seen also in some of the diversity committees, do you, do you have some more of those that you wanted to highlight? Because I don't think you touched on, you know, maybe the, those aspects that you are embedded in the community, which I think is very important to Commissioner DePaolo's, I'm sorry, Councilperson DePaolo's comments.
I, I think that, you know, there's a lot of the committees that were appointed on, there's steps, there's part of, we have an officer that sits on the YMCA Board of Directors, and the best part is that a good majority, I would say at least 70% of our officers, also live in this town. So they're your baseball coaches, they're your football coaches, when you have sports, they're part of the community, they're out there every day, and that's one of the highlights, and I've always lived in this town and a lot of my officers have too, and that to me is very important, to be directly involved in the community.
Very good. I know Mike Del Santo texted me to, that he's waiting to talk to you, Chief. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, I just wanted to echo some of the sentiments that some of the other council people have mentioned already, I think our Southington Police Department, police officers and the entire staff are consummate professionals. I've dealt over my many years in town with the police on many different occasions and they've always been luckily on the good side of the law, but they've always been consummate professionals, they return telephone calls, my kids were obsessed with police when they were a little younger and every time they saw a police officer, they had to run up and say hello, and they've always treated, you know, my children with respect, and, you know, there's always room for growth, so I'm delighted that the Southington Police Department is always engaged in doing better, so we appreciate everything that you do, and it's not only the Southington Police, Southington Fire Department, the ambulance crew, you know, I've dealt with situations just recently at my home, and everyone, like I said, I can't say enough about how professional our Southington Police Department is, and just continue to do what you're doing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mike. Is there anyone else? I don't see any other hands, but anyone else on the council? Yes, Chris?
Just, just another, just because the chief's here, last Tuesday night was such a remarkable event, I'm sure all of us could just go on raving about it, but Chief, especially because you're here, thank you for the cooperation with the police department to have that senior parade, graduation parade.
Yeah.
It was, it was just phenomenal. I, I said it in an email, I think, Paul, you agreed too, I actually hope it becomes an annual tradition. It was just such a memorable event and having the officer out guide the whole parade really made it go smoothly, so to all involved and especially you, Chief, for the police department, thank you for all your efforts to make that a success last week.
Thank you so much.
If he's got the show with a great team Southington has.
Absolutely.
Before we let you go, Chief, I, I just wanted to acknowledge that many times the leadership has such a great deal to do with our officers or in any department, you always look to the head, and your credentials within the state and within the new area is impeccable. You have been the president of the Connecticut Chiefs of Police Association, high, in the highest regard. We're just so blessed to have you here at the head and also with Deputy Chief Palmieri at the head of a wonderful department. I can't say enough about them and, and I want to just thank you for your professionalism in guiding our department. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, um, any other, let's talk about some councilmatic communications, I want to open it up to the council, thank you, Chief. Okay, Paul, I see your, I saw your hand first, so you can just take it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I wanted to just, and you know, Chris, you mentioned it a little bit earlier, but just say thank you to all that were involved in the, in the parade, it was phenomenal.
It was.
Having, having a high school senior and, and a sophomore, a rising sophomore, they were elated at the, the event, and every single person that I spoke to said the same thing, and not just, not just parents, you know, who have kids that are graduating, but the community in general, they had just a wonderful, pouring of support for these kids, and I do hope it happens each and every year, so thanks to all that made that happen. The other thing, Madam Chair, is I'm just going to wrap it up and say, it's a special day for you and I wanted to wish you a happy birthday.
Ah.
Take a minute to just wish you, I hope you have a wonderful birthday.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Paul.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, Chris. Who else, Chris, you have your hand up also, could you just go ahead?
Yes, we, we've all been receiving a lot of emails, especially today and over the weekend, related to the Christopher Columbus statue. Obviously, you know, people want to share their thoughts in, in the public communication portion of the meeting tonight, which they emailed us. I know, Vicki, you said you're getting a lot, probably as well, that maybe some aren't getting.
Yes, yes.
So with that, I really would suggest, Chris, Val and I spoke a lot about this, and we would like to schedule a public hearing so we can hear from the public their viewpoints on this issue, so I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda under New Business Item C, the scheduling of a public hearing related to the Columbus statue for our next meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Val. All those in favor for adding this to Item C?
Aye.
Aye.
Is, are there anybody, is there anyone opposed? Okay, hearing none, we will add this to Item C under New Business, and we will discuss it later on and probably vote on it, and that'd be wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. Anybody else have any councilmatic communications?
I do, Madam Chair.
Okay, Val, I'm going to let Tommy go next and then I'll recognize you, yep.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, very briefly, I think it was late last week, the Southington Water Department has been putting out notifications on water restrictions, and then I believe it was effective this morning that they made it mandatory, so the town is now under a odd and even water restriction, so thank you to the Water Department for, for putting those notices out, and I just wanted to make the public aware of that. And that's all I have this evening, thank you, Madam Chair.
Very good. Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. So just a couple of things, I just wanted to say, I, I really enjoyed being there last Tuesday night for the high school motorcade, it really was a lot of fun, and it was great to see, it was great to see the smiles on, on the students, so thank you to everyone who, who put that, was able to put that together. And just a quick update for the library, I happened to speak with our director and she just wanted me to let people know that the picking up, you know, calling for books and reserving the books, picking them up has been very busy, it's been working very well, they actually are putting lockers outside in the parking lot, so if you can't pick up a book during the hours that the library is normally open, they will put the books in a locker and give you a code to be able to get in and get your books, so you can pick them up after hours or on the weekend, which is really nice. And she also wanted me to pass along that for, for people that are homebound, they can, there's going to be a program where they can order books and the library will be delivering books to, to them one time a month, so that, that's going, that'll be getting started and they can get information on the website or they can call the library. Just wanted to pass that along.
Yeah, I'm so glad you gave an update on that, Val, because I know a lot of folks are anxious to get back into the library, so I appreciate all of that, I'm so glad that the drop-off and pickup is working well and that it is successful as we move forward and, and hopefully we can get everybody in as soon as we can, so that's good. Is there anyone else? I have a couple of things I want to give you all an opportunity, so very quickly, we handed out some of the distinguished service awards the last week or so, and please, I want to encourage everybody to, you know, write in, tell us, people who have outstanding service during this COVID epidemic, we want to let folks know that we appreciate it, and I have two distinguished services awards with me tonight, one for Chris Palmieri and also one for Paul Chaplinsky. Both of these men have been delivering groceries and helping out Janet Mellon, and it's just very wonderful, guys, that, that we see you in the thick of things as, as examples, so thank you very much, we'll make sure you get your award, and so that, I wanted to bring folks up to that. I was very happy to speak with Reverend Dr. Ron Brown from the First Congregational Church. He has, we're going to be meeting today to discuss an ongoing forum for diversity in the town of Southington. It was something I had wanted to do over a year ago, and sometimes it takes time for, for things to be brought in place. We will be meeting and discussing the parameters and what, what we feel our community needs and certainly anyone who has recommendations or whatever, if they want to give me, write me a text or give me a call or whatever, we're just beginning on, on the ground floor, but a few things that I feel are very important at this juncture, that it be ongoing, not every week or every month even, but certainly perhaps quarterly, and that everyone in the public would be invited, you know, we have a wonderful diversity committee on the town, with town staff, and Mark is also involved in that, we have a wonderful diversity group in the Board of Education, and I know Tom serves on that as well, and so that's all wonderful, but for the regular citizen who wants to get involved and maybe just learn a little bit, so more to come, we're just starting to discuss, I'm so happy that Reverend Ron Brown is, is going to help the community in this, it's the perfect place for it. First Church has, has a very unique position, not only physically in our community, but for years has been very active in this area, so, so I want to just thank Pastor Brown. And I think, I'm looking around, I think that's it for, for my council communications. So hearing none others, I think we need to move on to our special committees.
Vicki, if I could, just in response to your, I'm sure I speak for Paul as well, thank you for that honor, but honestly, I want to thank Janet Mellon and all the volunteers she has, because what they do for people in need in this community is absolutely remarkable, second to none, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank her and all her volunteers, and there were a lot, I mean, Paul, you know, we would go there and she had, you know, an army of volunteers still willing to do everything to, to help out despite the pandemic, so.
She is amazing, she is amazing.
Amazing, and even there's, there's town employees, emergency responders who are also going there, helping out during the pandemic to bring food to, to those who need it, so, and supplies, I mean, just an absolutely wonderful group of people that are doing that, my heart is, is warm when I go there, so, thank you.
Janet was the one who nominated both of you, by the way, just want to let you know that, so it's kind of a mutual respect. Officer Kristen Mer received one because of her work during all of this, delivering food and groceries and stuff, so the, the list is endless, and I appreciate that very much, Chris, thank you so much, and Paul. All right, committees, the sewer committee, please, if you could give a report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is Bill Dietzick.
Bill Dietzick, yeah.
So, we basically, the same update we got was our sewer plant's approximately 75% completion, which is, I understand, under time and under budget. As we learned last meeting, we're going to have a new superintendent, so we hope and obviously expect that we're going to get the same level of service, so we'll be reporting next month.
Very good, very good. Any questions for Val? Thank you, Bill, I appreciate it. With us tonight, we have Dr. Stephanie Arillo, who serves on my Plainville-Southington Regional Health District. Dr. Arillo, are you ready to give us a little update?
I sure am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. The Health District met on the, the Board of the Health District met on the 11th of March, and the bulk of our discussion was regarding COVID because, as you know, the Health District monitors the health of the people in Plainville-Southington and Middlefield, and so I will give you an update of the activities. With the pandemic, obviously the restaurants were closed, so they couldn't do any restaurant inspections, however, there were septic systems that needed inspections as, as well as other businesses that were still open, like supermarkets. With the reopening of the other businesses on the 17th of June, now the sanitarians are, are inspecting restaurants, hair and nail salons, public pools, as well as tattoo parlors. And the other thing they're doing is interpreting and distributing reopening guidelines for all these businesses, for establishments that they license, which the license fees are still coming in, and that's around 600 places in the three towns, those guidelines are distributed by fax or email. As you know, restaurants are opening phase two, which allows some indoor dining, nail and hair salons have reopened, some pools have begun to reopen, and also with the Health District has worked with the many youth leagues as they begin their practices and seasons. With the procurement of PPE, the Health District did have to spend some money, however, our Health District is very financially sound, even after the unexpected costs associated with the pandemic. And I just wanted to throw this in because at our January board meeting, it was, it was brought up to rename the Health District because of the addition of Middlefield, but we had a discussion on that at the March 11th meeting, however, due to the pandemic, we tabled this until at least next year, because we want to wait until we're past the pandemic. Well, what most of all I'd like to do is to continue for the public to practice social distancing, physical distancing, wash hands frequently, and stay home if you feel ill, that's the big thing. Quarantine yourself for 14 days if you've been exposed to anybody with COVID, or even if you, your spouse or partner or anybody with whom you live has been exposed, it's important to just do that, practice all these, all these things just to... It's important to just do that, practice all these, um, all these things just to, um, maintain health of the general public. Um, our next meeting is in September and, um, I'd be happy to take any questions and I hope everybody has a great summer.
Thank you so much, Dr. Urillo. Anybody have a question for Dr. Urillo concerning, uh, the district and, uh, what's going on? I don't see any questions, Stephanie, but yeah, I appreciate your time and effort always coming and bringing us up to date. We thank you very much for your service.
No, thank you for having me.
Thank you so much. Very good. Um, oh, okay. Uh, let's, uh, go to item C. Mike, the long-term recovery for Southington. Can you bring us up to date, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Dr. Urillo stole a lot of my thunder, but that's okay. So, uh, David's a few minutes. So, uh, we did have our meeting on Wednesday, the seventeenth of June, uh, this past Wednesday. Not a lot of, um, townspeople, uh, logged on. It was a busy day. It was the actually opening, uh, day of, of, uh, phase two. So, um, as what Mr. Urillo said, indoor dining at fifty percent capacity is now allowed. Um, the, the committee, uh, Mr. Perillo came on and spoke, spoke, um, a little bit about how things are very, very busy at Town Hall. The building department and the planning department have been really, uh, working very hard over the past few months. Because with everyone sitting home, they're looking out their back door and say, hey, what a good place to build a deck or a good place to put a pool in. So, um, licensing and permitting has been very, very busy. So, uh, you know, we need to commend town staff. They've been working very hard to try to have a quick turnaround, uh, for folks that wanted to, uh, to get permits for these things. Um, Mr. Town Manager Shoda, state of the second phase was a big change, going from twenty-five attendees outside to one hundred attendees. Uh, that meant that Little League and softball practices have begun. I know I'm ensconced in that now. My son plays Little League. So my new home is Rec Park just about every night. So that, uh, children are very, very excited about that. Um, and, you know, the parks are busy with baseball and softball going on. Uh, Mr. Lockwood came in and spoke about the town pools. The town pools are opening, uh, this Saturday, uh, June twenty-seventh. Guidelines will be pretty strict, uh, as well. So, uh, you know, the town staff will be watching out to make sure that social distancing is, is occurring, uh, not only in the water, but outside the water as well. So everyone that is, that does go to the town pools, make sure we listen carefully to, uh, directives set forth by, uh, town staff. Uh, Mr. Shoda stated the government buildings are on full operation, except for the calendar house and the library. The library is doing, um, online drop-offs and pickups and you can call and request things and they have a, a great process, um, for, uh, for the library going on right now. And, uh, we spoke a little bit about phase three. We didn't get too deep into it because things are so fluid. Things are changing often. Uh, but, um, uh, Mr. Lockwood mentioned how, uh, he and the fire chief had towardly compounds and they're getting ready, uh, to open, which is a great thing. And, um, there were some questions about some of the higher risk sports in town, such as football, lacrosse, and, uh, others that are a little riskier than baseball, where there's some sharing and maybe some contact. And Shane had discussed that July sixth will be the target date for those things. And Shane will probably bring that up, uh, during his, um, during his, uh, comments tonight in his section of the meeting. So, um, a couple of people did chime in from the public. Joan Callahan mentioned that the early childhood collaborative is very, there's some uncertain times coming this fall about daycare. They're unsure if school's going to be five days a week. So we don't know what we don't know. So there's some discussion upon that. Uh, and we decided to, uh, the restaurants downtown Lower Center Street have requested that, that remain closed until, uh, at least, uh, a higher percentage is allowed indoors for restaurants. So for the time being, unless they tell us differently, we're going to be leaving, uh, Lower Center Street closed. Um, other than that, that was pretty much the meeting. We did have some executive session items, uh, because we, we kind of combined our economic strike committee meeting. Uh, and so, you know, obviously we can't talk about what happened in the executive session, but there were no, no, uh, no motions made in executive session. So that was the meeting, Madam Chair. Any questions?
Any questions for Mike? I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Del Santo.
I have to ask, I have to ask Town Manager Shoda one question. Mr. Shoda? I just muted myself. Mark, would you happen to know if there are any signs left in Lara's office?
Yes, there's probably about twenty more signs, man.
Great. Pete Repocho from Sign Pro graciously donated, yes, we are open signs. They're beautiful. Uh, they're, I mentioned this at the meeting, they are first come, first served. If someone has a business in town that would like a, a sign, they simply have to go down to the town manager's office and speak with Lara. There's about twenty left. He graciously donated fifty of them. Uh, so a lot of folks from the Chamber of Commerce went down and grabbed some and there's about twenty left. So if you would like during business hours, you can go down to the, uh, town attorney's off, I'm sorry, the town manager's office and pick up signs. It's first come, first served. So once those twenty are gone, they're gone. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate all of, uh, the input. Uh, now we're going to self-insurance. Tom Lombardi, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The self-insurance committee met on, uh, last Wednesday, June seventeenth. Um, and I did, uh, prep the council and the public for, uh, our decision that we were going to make. But before I get into that, I just wanted to touch upon the, the self-insurance budget, um, review. We reviewed the information through May. So that's eleven months out of the twelve-month fiscal year. And for fiscal year two thousand twenty, which is just ending in a few weeks or next week, I guess. Uh, it was, we are one point, almost one point seven million dollars under budget. Now, like I said at our previous, like Councilman Poole's and myself have said repeatedly, we cannot look at that number and, and, and get excited and say that this is wonderful. As you remember, in our, in our operating budget for the town, we over budgeted by about three hundred fifty thousand dollars, um, for this upcoming year, fiscal year twenty-one. Now, the reason for this is because a lot, obviously due to the COVID nineteen shutdown, a lot of the medical services were not performed. So we did expect the savings. So we really need to remain focused as a council and Board of Finance and look at the self-insurance fund in really a two-year cycle. So we have to look at fiscal year twenty and twenty-one, possibly even the, the year after to really get a good understanding of where it's going to come in. But I, I believe the self-insurance fund is in a very good spot. I think, uh, we have the appropriate, we, we have the appropriate reserves and we have the surplus from this year to put us in a, in a solid position. Um, secondly, um, I, I brought up the, the, the recommendation from Anthem for the ABA, which stands for Applied Behavioral Analysis. Um, it, it, it relates to some of the, the items on the autism spectrum. Um, and I did request that the town manager and the finance director email out the document to the town council just so you had a little more details on it, um, instead of getting into all the details on this meeting. Uh, but it does provide some necessary services to, um, parents or town staff, uh, with, with a dependent, uh, that falls under the autism spectrum. So that was a unanimous approval at the, um, self-insurance committee. Um, in terms of dollars and cents, this is going to be an increase to our, this is an estimate from Anthem, about between seventy and a hundred fifty thousand dollars additional cost per year. But we all felt that this was a necessary, um, service. Um, and lastly, the, the concern that some of the, um, committee members had at our previous meeting was that we wanted to make sure that other health insurers were also recommending this service. And we did hear back from the consultant that, yes, in fact, other carriers are also recommending these services. Um, so, so if we do change carriers in the future, this would be a service that would remain to the town, uh, employees and their dependents. So a little bit long, but I hope the memo that was emailed out by Amelia to the council, uh, or Laura actually sent it out. I thought, I hope that was helpful to gain an understanding. Um, and maybe I, I think, uh, can I request that, uh, through Kathy's office that we include that document in the minutes for tonight?
Um, I, I, yes, I, I think we can. Absolutely. Kathy, is that okay with you?
Someone just needs to supply that to me and I'll add it.
Tom, please do that for the clerk, please.
Mr. Town Manager, can you send that to Kathy, please? Thank you. And that's all. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to, uh, answer them.
Anybody have any questions? I don't see any questions.
Uh, Councilman Palmeri.
Yeah, not a question, just a comment. I, I want to thank the self-insurance committee for their unanimous support for that. Honestly, I'm embarrassed that we haven't had that in the past. It's, I didn't realize that until I was told it was even under discussion. So I think that is huge and, and again, want to thank you and everyone else for unanimous support for that. And like I said, just shocked we didn't have that.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Councilman Palmeri. And, and I think, uh, actually the committee too, it was just something we didn't, we didn't realize. And Anthem does recommend certain services to our, to our plan periodically. And we, that was another thing that came up. We said, well, okay, well, let's, let's take a look. This is different than a state mandate because a state mandate, we have to do. Now, if Anthem recommends something, we don't necessarily have to. However, every recommendation that Anthem has made to us as a self-insured, um, group, we, we've accepted. So for us to not accept this one would have been really inappropriate. So, um, yeah, it, it just came to our attention. Uh, it's actually, I'm reading the document now, effective July first, two thousand twenty, Anthem is changing their enterprise coverage. So we're, we're going right along with the recommendation. So yeah, to your point, Councilman Palmeri, uh, I think it is a little bit surprising that it wasn't brought forward earlier.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I think, Chris, you're, you do make a, a very good point in that because it is so very much needed. And so, uh, I'm, I'm very happy about it as well. Okay, um, anything else? Hearing, uh, nothing else, uh, we go to the town manager.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd like you to look at the Board of Finance minutes, uh, pages seven through ten. Uh, this is what you'll be voting on tonight. Uh, on the, on the bottom of page seven is the consent agenda. Those are all normal motions made by the Board of Finance. On page eight were small manager memo. Those were all transfers, which take place usually this time of year when we go from one line to the other. Uh, page nine starts the, uh, the stuff that's, uh, very important. Uh, as you remember from your last meeting, we, we, uh, we approved about nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, in budget reallocation money for phase one of our capital budget. This is the second part that we went through with the Board of Finance. It's, it's six hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And we used it obviously for a budget reallocation for specific capital items. And with your indulgence, Madam Chair, I'm going to read them. A hundred thousand dollars, which is a capital budget for townwide HVAC systems, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, to the capital budget for information technology upgrades, fifty thousand, five hundred dollars for highway parks equipment, uh, fifty thousand dollars for street signs. You're probably aware that the federal government has required us to update all our street signs. That's where that money goes. It's going to be a several-year project that we're going to have to worry about. Uh, sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, for a fire department vehicle. That's not an engine. That's a, uh, support vehicle. That's the supervisor's vehicles. And then finally, two hundred thousand dollars for road widening and resurfacing. Uh, we also appropriated three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars to, uh, to road construction. This comes out of the federal, uh, the, you mean the state monies that they give us. We just received it in the beginning of June. Uh, so that gets appropriated to the roads. Finally, and probably the most important thing that we did that night, uh, is that we agreed to establish the non-lapsing account for the Board of Education. Just to refresh your memory, this does not have a money, uh, amount attached to it at this moment. Uh, what they did is they established the, um, the non-lapsing account, which is required by state statute, uh, for an amount not to exceed two percent of the BOE budget, uh, which is, as you know, approximately a hundred thousand dollars. So we're talking about no more than, uh, two million dollars would be the lapsing account. Uh, what we expect is that the superintendent, uh, will be coming to us probably in the, uh, September meeting, uh, to start discussing how much, uh, we're going to be funding that particular account. Happy to answer any questions that you have on the Board of Finance.
Uh, yeah, uh, Tom?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you to the town manager. I just had a quick question on the townwide HVAC, the hundred thousand. Yeah, the reason I'm asking about that is because I know we, we've gone, um, through some updates, specifically the town hall. Know the, uh, the John Rysell building has relatively newer things. So what, what is that? Um, where's that money going towards?
Well, it's going to be going to several different buildings, including the, the town hall, um, that over the next few years, we're going to update the, uh, the HVACs that have not been updated yet. As you recall, when we had the fourteen million dollars, that did not, most of that was the BOE in some town buildings. This is going to go toward the town buildings that weren't done at that time.
Okay, any other questions, uh, for the town manager concerning the, uh, uh, Board of Finance report?
All right, miss, no other questions, Madam Chair. Uh, obviously the next person I have speaking will be, uh, Mr. Shane Lockwood to give us an update.
Thank you. Welcome, Shane.
Uh, so from the, from the health district point of view, Dr. Urillo, uh, gave a, a comprehensive report. I just have a couple of things to add. So, uh, we're still seeing some cases of, uh, COVID, uh, some days none, the days a couple. So it's much better shape than where we were in, uh, uh, March, April and, uh, and May and beginning of this month. So, so I'm pleased about that. I'm also pleased, uh, while unfortunately we've lost fifty-four residents, uh, to the disease. We haven't had a new fatality in close to two weeks. Um, uh, as far as the guidelines, uh, I think we've only had a handful of complaints regarding, uh, some of the reopening. And they've been addressed quickly by either the health district or by the police department. In every case, it's just been, uh, educating the operator regarding the guidelines and, uh, uh, and they've taken the appropriate steps. So we haven't had any repeat complaints. Uh, youth sports, Dave Lepre has done an amazing job, uh, probably talking to the youth league, um, at some point, two or three times a week regarding the guidelines, interpreting the guidelines and doing site visits. So Dave's really done a good job. Um, most of the youth sports can start right now and then some of the higher impact ones will be able to, uh, uh, really step it up after July sixth. So I haven't heard any issues right now. Um, we've started to use the State of Connecticut Contact Facing System, uh, which is being used by right now fifty-four of the sixty-five health departments and districts in the state. So, uh, we expect that to be a little bit more robust going forward. And then I just want to give an update. At the last council meeting, I mentioned that, uh, well, myself and the police department were helping out the Sikhs, uh, up on West Street doing a mask giveaway. And, uh, a couple of weeks ago on a Saturday, myself and Officer Veraball in the Sikhs, uh, South End School. And in a matter of three hours, they gave out over, uh, two thousand masks and bottles of water to, uh, people, uh, showing up there. So I thought they did a really nice job with that event. So, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for our health director?
Quick question, Madam Chair?
Yes, of course, Val.
Thank you. Thanks, Shane, for the update. I know you've spoken a little bit about supplies, you know, upcoming for the, the rest of the summer and into the fall. Did you still feel pretty comfortable with, with what you have?
Yeah, we're, we're always looking for more, but I'm, I'm comfortable going into, uh, uh, the summer and the fall. So I think we're in good shape right now.
Good. Thanks.
Very good. Anybody else? Shane, I want to thank you for your time and getting us up to speed on each of our meetings. Uh, it's very important. And we appreciate that very much. Thank you for all your, your work. Um, all right. So to item C, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, of all the complaints I get, uh, on our park system, the biggest complaints I get are our tennis courts and our basketball courts. Uh, perfectly blunt, we have kind of, um, let them, uh, go a little bit farther than I normally would have liked to. Uh, but thanks to the Board of Finance and the town council, we were able to fund phase two of the, uh, parks improvement. An important part of that is what we're hoping to get voted on today. And I know it already went through the Public Works Committee with unanimous vote. Um, but we're asking for the permission to do all three parks, basketball and tennis. Uh, and we'd like to, uh, award that to, uh, hending, uh, resurfacing. Uh, the, the cost is two hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents. Uh, just, uh, because I had a couple of questions on it. Uh, we belong to what's called a co-op or a conglomerate, uh, purchasing agent. What happens is, is that, uh, most of you know this already, that sometimes we, we do, uh, get contractors through the COGS, which is the Council of Governments. Sometimes we get them off the state list. Sometimes we bid out on our own. Uh, when it comes to more expertise like this, uh, we, we go with, uh, with a certain group. Uh, we have several we can choose from. This one we went with Source Wealth. Uh, so I know that Mike's group has already, uh, reviewed it, but we're asking for permission to move forward. I think if, uh, we can get this thing started, we can get all, all the, uh, parks done this summer and fall. And to answer a question which I know you're going to ask is that there's always going to be some tennis courts and basketball courts open at all times. We're not doing all three at the same time. So, uh, and I know that's a couple of the questions that I had from the general public when they saw this on the agenda. So, uh, we're hoping you're able to prove that tonight. Happy to answer any questions that you have. So we're hoping you're able to prove that tonight. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, Tom Lombardi, please. Mr. Lombardi.
Thank you, Mr. Madam Chair, and thank you to the Town Manager. I would just, can you just explain? I know that the memorandums that we received talked about it went to the to a bid through Sourcewell. This week was the first that I've heard of this process with Sourcewell and the town using it as a, you know, I've heard of the other programs we use, the EZ IQ and for the state bids and things like that.
This is very similar to, actually, it's identical to EZ IQC and it's also identical to the COGS and the COGS, two different lists. It's where the we're an entity by a bunch of towns, whether it be nonprofits, towns, states, federal agencies. They all get together and they bid as a group. And what happens is, is obviously the biggest bang for your buck. So the town of Southington, when it wants to do a service or buy a product, can look at several different things. Now, obviously, the COGS and the COGS don't have things for resurfacing of tennis courts. That's not normally what's bid in that particular case. The State of Connecticut wouldn't have something like that. So we go into the more expertise ones, which is this particular one. So like I said, this particular group does it like all the others. They go out to bid, they take the contractors that bid and they review the contractors, make sure that they they do a quality job and they wouldn't be on the list without that. So the legwork is done by others and the towns get to take advantage of it. So I know that my staff has talked with Stanford and New London, who's already taught, who's already, and we're very happy with them. So I'm fine with the system.
So so I guess so our town staff puts in, I'm just making up numbers. So we say that we need five basketball courts and five tennis courts redone. Here's the dimensions. It goes into a system. Now, this this company, Hinding Hinding that we ended up going with, was there other companies who also responded to Sourcewell's request?
Well, there's a there's a list of them, Tom, just like you do before. When they give you the square footage prices and all that kind of stuff when you bid on the state list, it tells you the square footage prices for road work and all that. It's very similar to that. So what the town does is they look at it, they look and see how much it costs per square foot. They figure out what the project is and they choose a contractor that's on the list.
So there was more than one, I guess I have two follow ups here. So there more, there was more than one contractor that communicated with Sourcewell. And secondly, how, I assume that Sourcewell is saving us time from a logistics standpoint? How else are they sending us money or time?
Not only that, it's from an advertising standpoint. So it's not, advertising standpoint, they do all that work for us. They do the interviewing process for us. So it's a substantial amount of savings for us, just like the COGS do. They save us a ton of time, too. When a CROG does it, they actually have paid staff do all the work for the towns that belong to the CROG.
So may I make a comment, Tom, Madam Chair?
Sure.
This is Paul. So if I understand correctly, to the Town Manager, there's a list of these type of these type of activities that vendors will basically post their capabilities and their prices on. Rather than, so like, for example, when Southington goes out, are we necessarily putting out a bid for this? Or are Sourcewell basically going down the list and going, okay, who's capable of doing this? And they already have a predetermined price?
We are, the price per square foot for whatever you're talking about, if you're talking about this, that price is already there and the town.
It's in there. So we don't have to post it. We don't have to wait for bids. We don't have to wait all that stuff. It's you go get it and you pick.
You pick. It's just like, I can't, I can't say it any different. It's just like the state list. The state list has a whole bunch of contractors and they tell you how much per square foot or whatever the material you're buying or whatever the service you're looking for. It's the same thing. So like I said, towns use this because I don't know if you understand how much it costs to put bids together and advertising and then interviewing. So and more importantly, you could call up other towns that have already used this particular group and double check those. So it's a it's a very good system. And like I said, EZ IQC, how long we've been using those, it's the same system. EZ IQC probably for the last, what, seven or eight years, it's been very successful for us. It's the same system.
So then to the Councilman Lombardi, if you wanted more info, maybe Mike, you and I could request it through the Public Works and just get a little bit more detail of how it works, where the savings are, things like that, if that's of interest to you, Tom.
And I also, I sent you guys the website for the company too, so you can obviously go on your own. The this afternoon, I sent the update from the Park Superintendent with the website. So you can look at that too. But obviously, if you want more explanation on it, you know, obviously, I don't want to delay this. We need to move forward with this one, but if you want more explanation. So I know I'll turn it over to Mike because obviously this was discussed at his committee. So I assume they were satisfied when it came up for their committee.
Yeah.
Town Manager.
I appreciate the explanation. I just think it was worthwhile to explain to the public since this is the first I've heard of Sourcewell, so.
Oh, yeah, the company itself, not the not the theory though, Tom. The theory has been.
Like I said, I've been around for many EZ IQ bids and that process, so.
And Tom, if you wanted further information, Annette would be able to fill you in as well. Annette has all the information for this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
Next thing we have is from the, this is a request from the Sewer Committee. As you already know, we have four more pump stations left on our list to update. The next two in line will be the Plantsville and West Queen Street Pump Station. We're asking for your permission, this has already gone through the Sewer Committee, to hire tie and bond to do the design for the next two sewer projects. I had Public Works Director Hayden just add some more information too for a couple of questions that I did receive. And obviously, this is not the first time we've hired tie and bond. The system that we have, just to make it simple, is the system that we have is that we try and make the pump stations operate as economically as possible. And we use a can pump system. And obviously, our goal is to keep every one of our pump stations under $1 million, which we've been very successful of doing. So we're recommending that tie and bond be awarded the contract for the next two designs. And if Bill has any more comments as Chair of the Sewer Committee, I'll give it to him.
I don't have any more comments.
Okay. All right.
Chair, if there's no questions on that, Madam Chair, just a procedural matter. And I'll obviously, if I'm wrong, the Town Attorney will will correct me. Normally, if you have a motion for a public hearing on something that you made a lot of public input on tonight, my suggestion is you move the public hearing vote up earlier than public communication. That way, the public knows they don't have to speak twice. If you're going to schedule a public hearing at a future meeting, the public will understand they don't have to speak tonight and at the public hearing. So normally, this usually happens more planning and zoning than it does here. But procedurally, it makes sense. If you are going to vote on a public hearing, which a lot of people may speak on tonight, so they don't have to do it twice, you should take that vote prior to public communications. And I'll let the Town Attorney correct me if I'm wrong on that. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, who's talking? Tom, yes, go ahead.
Do you need a motion to move new business ID to before public communication?
I believe we need a motion on that.
New Business ID, which is scheduling a public hearing at our next meeting for July 13, 2012, to before public communication, right after the Town Attorney's report.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Tom. Let's call a vote on this because we are moving things around. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Ullis?
Yes.
Dzulinski? Del Santo? DiPaolo?
Yes.
Edick? Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmeri?
Yes.
Yes, I think it's it's great for the public to have that information for themselves. Great. Okay, well, thank you. We will be actually voting on the public hearing right after the Town Attorney's report. Attorney Taylor, would you, I'd like to give you a report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have any agenda items on my Town Attorney Report tonight, so I'm going to make it easy on you.
Do you have any questions for the Town Attorney? Well, we made it easy on you too, Jeremy. Are there any other questions? I don't want to make it too long. Hearing, no other, no questions for the Town Attorney. We thank you, Attorney and Town Attorney, and we appreciate your time. Okay, so now let's, we have a motion that we've moved it up to the public hearing question, item D. May I have a motion for this?
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing regarding the Columbus statute for our July meeting at 7:00 PM.
July 13.
And Val, you seconded. It's July 13. I want to get that right on the record. So the public hearing we're voting on is on July 13 at 7:00 PM. Is that correct? We understand that, right? Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Madam Chair, I have a question. Can I do something quick? So point of order. What, so we're asking, I want to make sure what we're voting on. What's, what is the scope of the public hearing and is there going to be any action in connection with the public hearing?
That's that's a very good question. I would like a little more clarification, so we're all on the same page and we all know what we're voting for. Right now, we, the motion is to have a public hearing on July 13. I do think that it's important to know whether or not, is there any additional information that we need to know on it? Is there an intent to move on the, for action on the 13th as well?
I guess if you want additional information, we've received a lot of communication from the public. This is a, that's not unique to our community. Many, many other, many cities in our own state, as well as in the country, are facing similar decisions. So I think it's important that we give the public an opportunity. And while I appreciate the amount of people that took the time on their own to send us information for tonight's meeting, I think it's important to advertise that we are offering the public an opportunity to come out and speak for or against statute. And then ultimately, we'd have to make a decision. Now, whether it's that night or not, I don't know, but I think ultimately, we're going to have to be, we're going to be faced with a decision.
So is there any more discussion on this? Bill, are you looking for additional information?
I just want to know exactly what I'm voting on. I mean, if it's just a general discussion about the statue or if it's a discussion about the removal of the statue, if it's a discussion about, you know, federal holidays in connection with it, how our town celebrates them. I just want, I want, I want, I want a narrow scope before I'm willing to vote for this. So if it's simple as that, we're going to have a discussion about the statue, fine. If we're going to have a discussion about the, fine, I just want it to be narrowed in scope.
I guess I could just, my motion, my intention is not to look at federal holidays. My intent was specific to discuss the statue. It's right outside the municipal center. It's on town property. It's, you know, I think that's the intent of the conversations that we've been having, the emails we've had. You know, I don't even think we have the authority to talk about federal holidays. But I think obviously, the statue is an issue that is important for the council to decide.
So the removal of the statue is really the scope of what we're voting on for public hearing.
Correct. The fate of, we'll say the fate of the statue.
Chris, that's what I wanted. Thank you, Chris.
Okay.
Okay, Val, you had your hand up. Did you want to say anything?
Yes, I just wanted to just add to that, that I don't believe we should take an action on this at the next meeting. I really think it's going to be important to listen to the public and then have some time to digest that and talk about it and decide what the steps would be from there. So I would hope that no action would be taken at the next meeting.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes?
Madam Chair, this is Mike Del Santo. I agree 100% with Councilman DiPaolo. I'm not inclined to vote on something where there's going to be action at the next meeting. Public hearing is fine. I want to listen and learn and digest.
Okay, all right. Anyone else have a comment on it?
I have one more.
Okay, Tom.
Going on what Councilman Dietrich said, who's going to draft the wording for the public hearing? Because it has to go on the top of our agenda for the next meeting. So who's responsible for drafting that?
I would ask to make sure that it's correct. I would ask our Town Attorney, Attorney Taylor, to make sure that it's worded correctly and that it would be very clear in terms of the scope. I think it's very important that we, it's a very good question about limiting the scope because that really is the bottom line. I think we're all on the same page with that. So, yeah, so I would ask Jeremy, Attorney Taylor, to take a look at it, make sure, because.
I think that I agree with the Councilman DiPaolo and Councilman Del Santo. I think it's good. Let's have the public hearing, see what's brought forward. And then if there needs to be a decision at a later date, it can happen.
Are we ready to vote, everybody? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Ullis? Dzulinski? Del Santo? DiPaolo?
Yes.
Edick?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmeri?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes, so we will have a public hearing on July 13, rather, at 7:00 PM. Thank you, everybody, for moving that forward. In light of that, I just, the real reason for moving it forward is that perhaps some of the folks we have now, I think 53 people, if you take the 10 of us away from, you know, 10 or 11 of us away, town staff and whatever, it goes down to about 43 participants this evening. And many perhaps would like to speak tonight or they can go on and speak at the public hearing. They don't have to speak at both, whatever they would like. So as Chris said, and what I was going to say is that we did in fact receive an awful lot of letters and texts and emails. And my whole day today was trying to organize them. And thank you, Lara Nichols, for helping out Mark's administrative assistant, just trying to make sure that we verify, you know, that the person is from Southington, that it came in and discussion, and they were, they presented their position. What I would say is this, and I would like to read the names because with the amount of folks that we had writing letters, it's, we just could never, ever read all of these letters at one time. And so rather than picking and choosing and, you know, it's a very emotional topic, I will not be reading the letters into our meeting tonight. I will make sure how they are attached to our official minutes in their entirety. And so anyone can pull our minutes and see exactly who said what and where they are in all of this. But I do want to do, say a couple of things. First of all, we closed off receiving letters for tonight's meeting at 7 o'clock this evening. So during the meeting, you sent a letter or something. Because the meeting is going on, it's just too difficult to go back and forth. Please resubmit that letter for the public hearing, if you want it for the public hearing. So we will go, we will go through these also, as Chris said, that we all received a huge amount of mail. And maybe some of your constituents that wrote you letters maybe are not on this list. So I want to read the names of the folks that are on this list. We will also have it also in our, in our minutes. If you have letters from constituents that are not on this list, would you please submit them so we can have as much of a complete list as possible? As I said, I believe it's 55 written documents that came in this week. And so let me just read the names of the folks that we have received letters from or emails from. And, so let me get through them. We read, we received from Bob Ives, Megan Mealy, Paula Guerin, Brian Corbino, Stephanie and Philip Mitchell, Alex Rikadon, Joe Pugliesi, Tenetta McCaw, Thomas and Connie Porter, Jennifer Khan. Connie Porter, Jennifer Khan, uh, Ruth Warner, Lauren Johns, uh, Angelica Wernicki, Arthur Smedberg, uh, Marilyn Sargent, Vanessa Hawk, Jim Machio, Samantha Nibbiola, Mark LaJoy, Dory Conlon Piragino, uh, Mary Warner Barbagallo, Lisa Pelletier, Matt and Michelle Florian, Duane Zersey, Paula Warner, Bob Sargent, Deborah Ludik Abate, Deborah Smith, Tina Ricchio, Kate Tavara Collins, uh, Josie Cossano, uh, Fernanda Lapelia, Antonio Cossano, Antoinette Barbato, Vincenzo DeSanti, Peter Santago, Susan Zabahansky, Kathleen, uh, Smedberg, Kristen Burns, uh, Carmella Kimmel, Missy Cipriani, uh, Kathleen Aldrick, Terry Casavero, Tony Morrison, Carol Chefs, Brian Callahan, Sharon Duclos, Jerry Triano, August Palmer, excuse me, uh, uh, Bruce Terrell, Erica Polcock, Dan Hart, Jolene Miselli, and Dr. Catherine Tees, T Y C Z. Um, all of the letters that I have and that the town manager's office have. If, I would ask us, when we get our minutes, to go through our list of people who maybe have contacted and make sure that we, their timestamp, we know the time they came in, they came before the meeting, um, and that they're going to go into, uh, uh, the minutes as well. We want to make sure everybody's heard. It's very, very important. So, um, yes?
So just, just myself hearing what you said, I only have about three quarters of the, of the names that you mentioned. So are you gonna send out, or is Lara gonna send out copies of all of them that you mentioned?
All of them. Everyone that I have mentioned, we have a copy for. And so, uh, Lara, in our minutes, will, will, we will actually have a packet of letters to make sure, letters and emails, so that we will have all of them and that we can read them and, uh, take our time to go over them and, uh, uh, maybe follow through with a phone call to someone or whatever. We need to investigate all the letters and, uh, also receive them. And, uh, so you will have the actual copies, Chris.
Okay. And I'll forward one more to you. Uh, Julie, Julie Portfolio, she said that your email and someone else's email got bounced back. I think Jim Morelli. So she sent it to the whole council, but Vicki, she said yours got bounced back. So I'll send that-
Sorry to hear that. Yep, yes, please do, Chris. Uh, and why don't you just send it right on to Laura? Allow, uh, Mark's administrative assistant so that we would have that accurate and that it flows from one source.
Okay.
All right?
Madam Chair, this is Mark. Can I say something?
Yes, Mark, please.
Just to clarify, um, Linda will be doing the minutes like she always does. We get a copy of the minutes. Um, we'll have the, when we send the packet out to you guys, we send the minutes out. As soon as they're done, we send it to you out immediately. We will attach the, uh, the numerous letters that we have to that. And those letters will also be given to Kathy. So when, uh, those, the, they'll be the official minutes. And when they go on the website, all those letters will be attached also. So, um, there'll be three different places you can get them. All the council people will be getting theirs directly.
Are there any questions from, from the council? Thank you for your tolerance. As I read all of those names, but I think it was important to do so. So, well, all right. Um, we are now at, uh, Public Communications and we are, uh, we have, uh, uh, over forty people who are participants, uh, in the meeting, other than town staff and council people. I will just go over again, just as a reminder, uh, if you are going to speak tonight, uh, you will have five minutes. Please identify yourself with your name and address. Uh, also, uh, we, we, we are, we want to hear you and we want to give you the respect that you deserve. We would ask that, that would also be, um, uh, conveyed to us as well. Um, uh, now, we're going to start, as we've done in, um, previous, uh, council me, meetings, those that are currently, uh, on, uh, the computer, online. And Paul, uh, Chuplinsky is going to be handling that. And, uh, he will designate who is going to speak. Is that all right, Paul?
Sure, Madam Chair. Uh, as a point of order, what I've done is I've unlocked the chat feature now. So, uh, it, for those people who are on the phone from the public that would like to, um, that would like to quote unquote, step up to the microphone and, uh, and say something during public communications, if you don't mind, uh, just put your, um, put your name or just say, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to speak, um, in the text box, using your computer or your phone. Just let us know that you would like to speak. And what we'll do is we'll take all the names of the people who are on computers first, in the order at which they type in their name that they would like to, uh, that they would like to speak. We'll go through those one at a time. Uh, we'll give everybody a chance to, uh, to, who's on the computer digitally, to speak first. Once we're done, what we'll do is we'll open all the phone microphones. It looks like there's, Madam Chair, there's roughly, I don't know, maybe ten people or so that are call-ins. And what I'll do, since those people can't type that they would like to speak, what I'll do is I'll, I'll unmute all of those phones, um, after the people with the computers, and we'll ask those people if they would like to speak. So if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, let's see if there's anybody on their computers that would like to speak now.
Thank you, Paul.
And those who are on the computers can also unmute themselves. They don't need my help.
So Anna, uh, mentioned that she would like to speak.
It looks like we have-
Susan.
Susan, then Anna, and then Melissa. So Susan, would you like to speak first? You were the first one in line.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Susan Zabahansky, twenty-eight Working Street in Planceville. Um, I just, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read what I had, um, wrote into, into the council, but I'll do that at the public hearing. But I guess I have sort of a question. I know it can't really be answered to the council, but I'm kind of curious how often we're going to keep bringing up this Columbus statue. It's been voted on before in the past. Um, it's, you know, it's been taken off. So my, my question is, like, where does it end? Do we keep bringing it up and taking up council time and people's time on this matter? Um, to make it into a public hearing when too many came, you know, is, is just a display of, I don't know why it needs to be advertised. It's almost like inflammatory, in my opinion, like, just causing in, you know, divide in the community. I'm sure, you know, if people needed to, I don't know why it's being brought up at this time, the Columbus statue. Um, it's, you know, I mean, I guess my, my concern is it just keeps coming up over and over and over again. And, and, and constantly, I, I, I know at least twice it's been up, brought up, um, in these council, in council meetings and been voted on. And, um, and in, in my opinion, I mean, to bring it up as a public hearing so that it's advertised? I mean, that sounds divisive to me. It just sounds very divisive. If people have an issue with the Columbus statue, they can come to any meeting at any time and speak about it. So I don't know why it needs to be in the public hearing. It's already been voted on. You guys already voted on that without, you know, the public having any input on that. But that's just something that I want to bring up. And, and, and how often are we going to keep bringing it up? Is it, you know, every five years when times change? Are we going to keep bringing up? Should the, should the Columbus statue come down and stay up? And, you know, it's just a constant, you know, how often we're going to bring this up is my, is my point, I guess. So I'm going to read, I will read my statement, but I'll do that at the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, we have Anna up next, and then followed by Anna will be Melissa. Anna, please, if you want to unmute yourself, Anna.
Hi there. Uh, so I just want to thank you for some time. I'm sorry, I'm going to talk about statue. I, so I'm actually the one who created the petition. Just putting a, a face to the, the paper. I wrote down what I'm going to say. I'm not really a great speaker.
Address, Madam Chair?
Yes, of course. Yes, sorry. Uh, so that's fifty Cambridge Drive, Arlington, four-six-four-eight-nine. Is that good? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I just want to speak to you briefly today about the issue of moving the statue that's in front of the municipal center. So I really want to emphasize, uh, I'm speaking in hopes to help our community discuss the matter respectfully and just be able to express how some of us in the community feel about it. I made this petition so we can reopen the discussion and decide together as a community if we want to keep the statue on public property. Firstly, I want to address the topic of a statue's purpose. I think statues are intended to honor those they portray. Uh, the inscription on the statue describes Columbus as a great navigator and discoverer and portrays him as a benign historical figure. And in doing so, I think it erases the history by ignoring his violent and immoral acts. It also forgets the lives and pain of countless Native Americans who suffered directly or indirectly from his actions. We don't have enough time to detail all of the atrocities he committed. But in short, he murdered, raped, and enslaved the native people who had the misfortune of being discovered by him. The statue is not really a preservation of history, but it's rather an erasure. Um, so why I'm talking about the statue? So we all know there have been some recent events that have caused many in our country to reconsider our relationship with our history. We can see today that people are reevaluating our public spaces around the country and elsewhere in Connecticut. So for example, in New Haven, the New Haven Parks Department has voted to remove the Christopher Columbus statue in Worcester Square. Uh, New Haven is actually the home of the Knights of Columbus, one of the donors of the statue in our town. And in New Haven, they've been having talks with the Knights of Columbus to have the statue perhaps moved to them and not, you know, completely destroyed. Uh, so the, but the main issue here is not the statue's existence for me, but rather that it's on public property and I don't feel it represents the spirit of our town. And I just want to end by, uh, saying that our town's motto is the city of progress. And I hope that we can live up to that. So I really want to thank you for listening to me tonight. And I also want to thank you just taking the time to consider our emails. Okay?
That's it.
That's it for my part.
Thank you.
And happy birthday. Okay. Sorry, this is such a downer.
That's okay. It's okay. Well, thank you. It was very informative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up. Madam Chair, thank you, Anna. Madam Chair, Melissa is up next.
Okay, Melissa.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. I'm sorry, I did send an email and apparently it never made it to anybody's, uh, hands. And then I'm not going to read it. Instead, I'll just resend it. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of keeping said statue. Um, I want to second what Susan said. It's, we're beating a dead horse at this point. We have a town government in place. It was voted on unanimously. I agree with her with putting it out there and, you know, creating this hysteria that, you know, is it getting there on social media? Absolutely. But taking it into your time, I think, is counterproductive. And I do agree with her on that point. Um, I respect Anna's view on it. Oddly, I was Anna's daycare provider at one time. Um, and I do respect her view and see where she's coming from. But as a first-generation Italian in this town, born, raised, um, I really had to deep on this one because it's what we were taught. It's what we learned. And I did some extensive research and I came across a little snippet that I'm going to read to you that I think pretty much says with what most of us are thinking that are in support of it. Um, I'm speaking for myself on this, but, you know, the, the chattering that I've heard, I think this is as concise as we can get. Um, it was written by someone named Lakshmi Gandhi, who is a freelance reporter. And he reports for several different avenues, um, from NPR to NBC and so on. And he wrote an article back in twenty thirteen about Columbus and, and why the Italians celebrate him. And he said, because Italian-Americans were struggling against religious and ethnic discrimination in the United States, many in the community saw celebrating the life and accomplishments of Christopher Columbus as a way for Italian-Americans to be accepted by the mainstream. Um, and I think removing said statue does cause concern for discrimination against a heavy Italian population in this town. Um, Mr. Angelo Lo was, you know, hell-bent to get this put up. Um, it's, like I said, it, it may be a generational thing, but at this point, it was put in place. Our government voted on it. It passed unanimously. And I feel that it needs to stay where it is without some big fanfare. We are not New Haven. We are not Middletown. We are not New London. We are Southington. We're better than this. We're stronger than this. Why are we followers? We're, if we're going to be the city of progress, then we need to be leaders. All of you need to be leaders in this. And being leaders is standing up for what civic communities honored, paid for, went through all the proper channels. Nobody just stuck it there in the middle of the night. And I'm going to stand strong on this and I'll see you all on July thirteenth, if I'm not changed before then.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Ma, thank you, Melissa. Madam Chair, uh, it looks like there's nobody else who typed in the chat box on the computer. So if it's okay with you, we'll make one last call for those who are on the computers.
Thank you, Paul, please.
So if there's anybody else on the computer who would like to speak now at Public, uh, Public Communications, can you please, uh, either raise your hand or type in the chat box? Or unmute yourself and say that you'd like to speak? Okay. Madam Chair, if it's okay, I'd like to go to the call-ins and un, and unmute all the call-in users.
Of course.
That'll be, uh, important for all the council people and everybody else on the line to make sure that their phones are on mute so that we can keep the background noise down. So, uh, what I'm going to do is unmute all the phones now for all the call-in users. And what we're going to do is ask the call-in users, uh, to please speak up now if you would like to speak during public communications. Anybody on the phone who called in? That would like to speak during public communications?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hi, my name is Joan Hur.
Hi, I'm sorry. Joan, Joan, are you still there?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
Go ahead. Can you please, can you please start over?
Hi, yeah, my name is Joan Hur. Joan Hur at one, at one three, Hur, three.
Okay.
Okay.
Joan, I'm just gonna, it sounds like we have some echo. So I'm going to try to turn the other phones off while you're speaking.
Okay.
Can you give me one more sound check?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
That sounds better. Okay, my, I didn't expect to speak, so this will be brief. Um, this is my statement in support of the removal of the Columbus statue from the John Wyshell Municipal Center. And I did hear the last people that spoke. And, um, I know that, um, there is some concern about Italian-Americans. And I have great respect for Italian-Americans, their early struggle for legitimacy as Americans and their contributions to the United States. However, in good conscience, I do not hold Christopher Columbus in the same high regard. Uh, his diaries documenting the ongoing violent enslavement and subjugation of the native inhabitants of the West Indies in order to gain as much wealth as possible, um, is now part of, um, you know, our, our history. We know of his diaries. We know what he did. Um, he often hunted, um, indigenous people for sport. Um, there were, was rape, torture, murder. Indian bodies were used as food for his hunting dogs. Um, over one-third of the original indigenous population in the West Indies, um, out of a population of three hundred thousand, um, was decimated, um, upon, after Columbus's arrival. So this is not the great cultural encounter that, um, it seems to be making, being made out to be. And, um, I'm very comfortable with the removal of the statue, um, to be put on private property. Um, I don't think it's an erasure of history as much as an awareness that we need to, um, honor all people and not disregard so many people have gone through, um, back in fourteen ninety-two and now. So I just, it's in public record that I support the removal of the Christopher Columbus statue. And I do not think that it would result in any type of discrimination against Italian-Americans in our town because I feel that, um, Italian-Americans in Southington are very well-established and, um- in our town, because I feel that Italian-Americans in Southington are very well-established and have contributed so much themselves. I don't think that only Christopher Columbus represents. Does anyone, does anyone have any questions? Some laughter.
Thank you. We're not, we're not allowed to interact with, but this is your time, so we're here to listen, so thank you so much.
There was just one comment, Madam Chair, there was confusion about Joan, if you don't mind just stating your name and address one more time for the record so that we can capture that.
Sure. Joan Hurley, H-R-E-Y, 123 Curtis Street.
Awesome. Thank you, Joan. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Okay. Joan, I'm going to put your phone back on mute, and I'll unmute the others. Is there, is there anybody else who's a call-in user to this meeting who would like to speak now during public communications? All the phones are unmuted. One more call? Any callers? Okay, Madam Chair.
Okay. I would just, I thank you every, all of the speakers, you were all wonderful, and you know, we can hear you, and that's very, very important. So thank you for all of your information and all of your input. I will remind all of those who have written that your letters will be included, and that if you have not written and you wish for your information to be included in our public hearing on the 17th of July, feel free to write. And I would ask you, you know, to send it not to individual council people, because there's nine of us, but if you could send it directly to the town manager's office at Town Hall on Main Street, that would be a good place where all of the discussion would be kind of kept and cataloged and everything for our, our public hearing. So thank you very much, everybody. I will close public hearing right now, and we'll, I'm sure we'll have more to say on this subject next month. So, okay. Old business, action on the Board of Finance Minutes. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Finance Minutes from...
Thank you.
June 10th, 2020.
Okay, Mike, you seconded. I saw your hand go up at the same time, Chris Palmeri, so I'll both second it, I just see, so, that's okay.
He'll owe me one. Give it to Chris.
Okay. I'm going to just do a regular vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Item B, yes?
Just as a reminder, because I'm getting messages about reminding on the chat function, I think most people can look at the, if it's functioning or not, so I think we're in good shape. I turned it off after public communications, we're good.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for doing that. I forgot to ask you to do it, so I'm glad you're on top of things. Item B, action on tennis and baseball courts resupposing recommendation?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, Madam Chair.
I believe that being the motion and call you seconded.
Madam Chair.
Chair, can I say something, please?
Yes, please.
Okay. Tennis courts of West Haven for $235,394.50. Is that right, Mr. Del Santo?
It's your time, manager.
I just want to say, if someone's getting, somebody's phone is open, and it's making an awful lot of feedback, would you just, please mute your phones and, and when you want to speak, of course, unmute them, but thank you. I appreciate that. So right now, we have a motion on the floor. It's seconded by, made by Mr. Del Santo, seconded by Mr. Chaplinsky. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Of any one opposed to this? Okay, hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item C, action on the design services for the Plansville and West Queen Street pump station. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Bill. I will make a motion to approve design services for the Plansville and West Queen Street pump stations as recommended.
Who seconded it? Thank you, Paul. Okay, is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, the action is carried unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Tax refunds, Val?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will make a motion that we approve the tax refund as outlined in our package tonight.
Madam Chair, this is Bill, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Item B, appointments, Conservation Commission, Mark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been given the name of Gregory Alley, and I hereby appoint him to the Conservation Commission to a term that expires April 2024. He is hereby appointed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Town Manager. Item two, Library Director, a one-member term expiring in November 2021. Who made a motion?
For interrupting. Madam Chair, this is Mike Del Santo. I want to, Patricia Queen, the position of the Library Director.
Yep. And Mike, we know that the position is not a Republican position. Patricia Queen is an unaffiliate, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a second on the nomination?
Second from Jim.
Thank you, Jim, you seconded it. Are there any other nominations on the floor that would like to be considered?
I have discussed them.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, I understand, and Vicki, you made the point at the last meeting, I understand that legally, yes, the seats, according to the charter, you can't have more than six members of the Republican Party on the Library Board, and you don't, because there are six members of the Republican Party on the Library Board currently. We currently have only three members of the Library Board that are on the Democratic Party. I know the spirit of the charter is so that each of the parties has a voice in who fills those spots. We have appointed unaffiliates, too. Here's the difference, though. When we've appointed unaffiliates, we've appointed unaffiliates to take the place of a Democratic spot. So yes, you can legally put an unaffiliate on there, however, I have to say I object, and I think the world of Patricia Queen, it has nothing to do with her, and I want to make that clear. But I also want to remind this council that we had the opportunity, and when we put, when we made appointments for the Library Board, we chose to not even take the sixth Democratic spot, and we gave that spot to a Republican member, and then we further had a Republican chair stay on that board even though the Democrats controlled the council. So I'm not asking for anything I wouldn't lead by example and do myself, this is what we did. So I'm extremely disappointed that we didn't have any voice or say in anything other than the two people that are currently serving on that board for us, and it's very disappointing.
Thank you, Chris.
Chair, Madam Chair, this is Mike Del Santo. So is there another nominee? Is there another?
I have not heard another nominee yet. Really, yeah. Okay, there's no other nominee.
I heard you asked for other nominees, and I just heard the discussion, I wasn't sure if there was a nominee for the position.
Very good. Is there anything else that anyone wants to say? I want to give an opportunity. I see Chris Pulis's hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to reiterate for the record that personally, and I think that I have confidence that Councilman Palmeri and Councilwoman DePaolo would agree with me, that for, we have no issues with Patricia Queen whatsoever as a nominee for the Library Board. I served with Patricia on the Self-Insurance Committee, I got to know her. She is a kind, intelligent, dedicated resident of our town. I enjoyed my interactions with her when I would attend Board of Education events as an educator. She has the best interest of our town in our mind. But rather, where I have concern is with the process that the party is, continues to implement with appointees, which is not collaborative, in my view. I'm pretty sure, though, that it's not the intent of the town charter to stack council committees with singular parties' appointees. I think that the intent is that, the intent is that there is a minority, a true minority representation. I remember back to 2017, and I'm going to share a few samples, and then I'll pause. It was my first time on the council, and how the appointees were handled during that time, we held the majority. I recall clearly that when it was up to the Calendar House Building Committee, we kept that committee intact. We kept former Republican Councilor Paul Champagne as the chair. We could have taken the chair of the Ordinance Committee, put a Democrat there, but instead we kept former Republican Councilor Cheryl Lonsberry in that position. Republican Ed Pocock was appointed co-chair of the Farm Heritage Committee. I suggested that Joe Lebinac remain chairman of the Self-Insurance Committee, not because I didn't want the chairmanship, but rather because it was in the best interest of the town. I was a, I was a brand-new freshman counselor, and he had experience on the committee, and he should have had, he should have had the leadership, because it was in the best interest of the town. And, you know, you're not, you're not breaking any rules here, you're following the charter, but it saddens me as a resident, as someone who gives a lot to this town, that the current approach to appointments isn't so collaborative. It's alarm, but it undermines the true intent of our charter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Val, were you going to say something, too?
Madam Chair, I did want to place the name of the nominee, Kristen Freeman.
I'll second.
Okay, very good.
And if I, for discussion again?
Sure.
And this was clearly discussed between the Republican Party Chair and the Democratic Party Chair. So we didn't want to put forward a name and embarrass people tonight, because obviously there was some conversation already outside of the meeting, but clearly we have, we have a name, and we're ready to move forward, and again, it's just disappointing the way this whole thing played out.
Okay. I don't know if anybody on our side has any, anything to discuss at this point, I just want to make a statement. And as everyone who has had time on the council knows, that when you come in as the majority party, you have things that you want to see accomplished, and you want to, Chris, Mr., Chris Pulis had said, you know, "For the love of the community." However, we've seen over the last few months that collaboration has been very difficult, and we need to get things done. And so all of us are, all of us know Patricia. We know she's wonderful, we've all said it, and I think she can move and voice her opinion and, and move things forward. I also believe that we don't have enough unaffiliated folks represented. When we, our town is made up of a great deal of unaffiliates, and so that was one of the motivations, to see if we could get people who are not affiliated with a party start to get involved and get involved in the process. And that was, that has been our desire. Our desire is always to collaborate. From the beginning, since I've been Chair, I have extended myself many times to the party, to our colleagues on the floor. And it has been a very difficult time, because I feel especially in the last three months or so, three or four months, that we have not collaborated at all. I've given opportunities many times, I've said to all of you about the videos that were going on at the beginning of COVID, please come forward, let's do it, and everybody has an idea, let's work together. But in honesty, there has been very little. So we need to move forward. We are open to putting Democrats on, of course, we are not, we are not saying that we will never appoint another Democrat, but however, we need to make sure that the people that serve the town can work together. And it's my sincere desire, and I'm going to close the discussion now, because we can go back and forth.
Before you close the discussion, briefing?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. No, I think, Michael, I think, I really think we should close it right now. I waited till, I really waited till everyone had their say. Excuse me, excuse me. I think as Chairman, I'm ending the conversation on this, and we're going to move the motion.
Madam Chair, I have every right to speak, as does Mr. Del Santo and Mrs. DePaolo.
So you've already spoken, Chris, is there anything else you want to say?
Yes, just in response to what you just said. If everything you just said were true, first of all, I disagree, I think we have collaborated, and you cited some exact examples. You cited, you cited the video, we just stood together in solidarity last week against racism. So those are just two examples immediately. You honored Paul and myself tonight, that is standing in collaboration, so...
Because my heart is still to collaborate, Chris. My heart is still that we can work together.
And we are, but we disagree over this issue.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we, Madam Chair, we do dis...
Excuse me.
Chris, I mean, we don't want this to spiral out of control, right, Chris?
Excuse me, Paul. I'd like to finish what I'm saying. My other, my other point, Vicki, is if that were true about unaffiliates, then you had a spot two weeks ago, and it's just not, it's not sincere when we know the makeup of that board now is six Republicans, only two Democrats, and now an unaffiliate, and you had an opportunity.
I think that's wonderful. I think it's terrific that unaffiliates are coming forward, that we're finding people that are thinking outside the box, that are not controlled by party affiliation, but rather they're going to be able to speak their mind and bring a breath of fresh air to all of our, all of our areas. I think we've overlooked them long enough. It's not a political game, it's getting somebody in that is ready to move forward with new ideas and great, great ideas. Paul Chaplinsky, did you make a motion to move the motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to speak first.
All right, Val, you can.
Thank you. I just feel that there, there really was no collab, there has been very little collaboration on appointments. I, I agree there's been collaboration in other areas, and I think we've worked well together, but as far as the appointments, there really has not been collaboration, and I feel as though you're, I understand why you want to get an unaffiliated person, I know Patricia Queen well, too, and she's a wonderful person, and she will do an excellent job, but we did not have, you did not ask for, we were not able to give you a name so that we could think about our person. She, we have somebody who was available, and, and you...
I'm sorry. Madam Chair, I do recall earlier in the meeting that there was an opportunity to put a name forward, and it was quiet. Nobody put a name forward, nobody took, put a name forward at first, until after the first one, I'm just clarifying, until after discussion, it was quiet for a nomination, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, councilperson DePaolo, I'm just saying, there was no nomination, there was no nomination on the floor from your side, Val, until discussion occurred for a while, and everybody, you know, thought about it, and then, and then a nomination came forward. So I want to make sure that we're accurately representing what happened, that there was a long silence of no, no nomination before one came forward, so I just, just to clarify.
I'm going to let you, Val, I really want you to finish, I want you to go ahead and finish, and then we are going to move the motion, we're not going to keep going on this thing, I think we've made ourselves, I think I've made myself clear, my heart, my heart is to collaborate with all of you all the time, that we represent the entire town, it's important for us to collaborate, it's important for us to work together and not take cheap shots on the council floor at one another, not to bring up extraneous things on the council floor, that's, that, yeah, go ahead, Val, I'm sorry, I'm not going to say anything else.
Right, well, you've given me the opportunity to speak, and I've been interrupted twice now by Councilman Chaplinsky, so how is that, listening to each other and collaboration? We put up a name. There might have been a, we put up a name, so I am just, I am disappointed, too. I'm disappointed that, that... I'm disappointed that that this, it's the process. And there has not been from day one, there has not been collaboration on appointments. And I'll leave it at that. But we should not, when, when a councilperson is speaking, no one should be interrupting that councilperson. We have to have more respect for each other.
I agree. And I also agree that sometimes it becomes very emotional. And sometimes we're people and sometimes we say things we shouldn't. And sometimes we we falter. And so that that is understood. And with that, I am going to call the motion right now. And so, Madam Clerk, we have two names listed. So as you, as you call the name, I would ask you all to say the name of the person that you would like to endorse for the of the library board.
Kristen Freeman.
Chaplinsky.
Patricia Queen.
Del Santo. Kristen Freeman.
Based solely on her qualifications, Patricia Queen.
Lombardi.
Patricia Queen.
Morelli.
Patricia Queen.
Palmeri.
Kristen Freeman.
Patricia Queen. And I would do want to say thank you to Kristen Freeman and and I'm sure she's a wonderful person, but the council has spoken. Thank you so much. So we're going to move into adjournment right now. And may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, Mike Del Santo.
Second.
Morelli seconded. Morelli seconded.
Say aye?
Aye.
Aye, everybody said aye? It's okay.
Aye.
Listen, thank you, everybody. And I I'm open for conversation further on this offline. And and if there's some, if we can find common ground, I'm all for it. So thank you, everybody. Good night to the public. We had, I think, a record number of people joining us for our meeting, and that's always good. So thank you all very much. Good night, everybody.